It is 10:00 AM. It is the hour. I am going to call the regular meeting of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for July 25th, 2017 to order. Good morning, everybody. At this time, if I can get Mr. John Sandy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsha Burke Bigler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeannie Herman.
Here.
John Slaughter.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Lepirelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair, and for the record, Mr. Hartung is on the telephone as opposed to present in the room.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We do have a quorum. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung, for joining us. All right. We are on to public comment. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item three is public comment. Comment heard on this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear a public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made at the commission as a whole.
Thank you. So first, I have Ms. Tammy Holt still, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly.
And yes, we have the overhead.
Can we get the overhead, please?
Hi, Tammy Holt Still for the record. Good morning, Commissioners, and Still here for the record. This last Thursday, there was a nav meeting that we had gone to. The city of Reno and Par- Perdo?
Prado.
Prado, excuse me. Prado Ranch Properties, which is on the Lemon Drive in Arkansas, has what you're seeing pictures of right now, is still flooded and has water on their property. It is between, Lemon Drive is dry, but you can see there's water on both sides. And they are, they stated for the record that the Hesco barriers were coming down and that Lemon Drive was going to be opening. Now, three weeks ago, I had a meeting and I was told with, by Dwayne Smith, that those Hesco barriers were not coming down because they are going to protect the residents and that Lemon Drive would not be opening. I have a concern that there's been persuasion from the developer of this property, who is pushing the situation, and I think it's time for the Washoe County stand up for the residents and make sure that we stay protected. I also like to say that it is a FEMA flood zone and as a FEMA flood zone, there are TMRPA codes that stand for this, for building purposes, and it's something that, as a Washoe County, should be supporting that they're not be building in a flood zone, especially a FEMA floodplain. I would also like to talk about, okay, there, I want to go to the church. The church has started its recovery process, as you see there, and as of yet, I have not heard anything about protecting this church. It was sacrificed during the flooding and it still does not have any type of Hesco barriers or anything to protect it when the water comes back. So those are some things that we need to be thinking about, and I'm bringing it to your attention so you can. It was exciting to see them starting to work on it. I do not have pictures, but my husband took pictures today. There were two, or a section of Hesco barriers that were taken out. I guess Dana said that they're, Dana Searsley said that they are trying to see what it's like to take those Hesco barriers apart so that they can get that trash bin out when the time comes, but also they were testing to see if they could start taking down some of the Hesco barriers and not destroy them so that they can still be there to be replaced if the residents are flooding. I also spoke with Michelle Montoya yesterday from, regarding the $400,000 flood relief, or the $400,000 for, from HUD, for the residents, Washoe County residents, and she says she has not received any type of letter of support regarding that. August 1st, I know you guys are having a workshop. I will not be able to attend. Somebody will.
Thank you, Ms.
For the record, Mr. Chair, I had a letter from Ms. Holt Still, which I distributed to the board.
Great. Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Mr. Tom Noblet.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. I like what Tammy had to say about persuasion because I wish Sam Dine was here today because I would tell him that I am on his side with Reno Gazette Journal and also USA Today. I went and saw them. I happened to run across an old paper and it was Russia, Russia, Russia. Just to let you know, before I go into my little presentation here, I did call James Clapper's office because I know somebody that knows him and I said, you know, I haven't received a call yet from Putin. This was before the election. So I'm not quite sure why you think that he is involved in this election, but I'm not voting for Hillary Clinton because she's a liar, okay? And that's, I don't like liars. And the funny thing is, is those people that love the truth are called hate mongers, or classified as hate mongers. The other thing too, since Mr. Hartung's not here, one of the things that I realized is in looking at these newspaper reporters, the females, they all look alike and that's how they get heard. So I tried it this morning. I've got some eye makeup on so that maybe I can be heard and, you know, the plastic face and everything. But what I wanted to do is tell you that these, this Reno Gazette Journal, it's not about the business. The business itself is fine. It's the individuals that are in there biasing the news that cause factions, anger, and dissension. That also happens with Washoe County. For example, if you get pulled over for a citation, can we project that? Because I do want to give this to you guys. Am I doing something wrong?
No.
Okay. So I got a citation for doing something horrible. I was holding something in my right hand and I tried to talk to the officer, give a disserment. He brought me to tears, okay? He hurt my feelings. So I sent a letter off to Washoe County Sheriff's Office. And I won't read the whole thing because it's a lot, but I said, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that these guys lied to me. This officer lied to me. I found two officers later. One lied, one did not. There's page two. You guys can read the whole thing. So what I did was I said, I'm going to challenge you on this. I went and got my driving record. I have a really good driving record. The only thing that I got pulled over for was in Missouri and it was a horrible nightmare and I couldn't go fight it, so I had to pay it. I went to court. They made me file a petition, a plea bargain, that was absolutely false. And I said, you want me to sign my name to a lie? They go, well, the judge won't listen to you. Said, okay, I'll sign the lie. Then I filled out a complaint against the officer. You know what they said? They said, oh, we'll call you back. We'll get back in touch with you. I said, you guys have double standards here. I said, if I would have lied to the officer, I would have gotten away with it, but he lied to me, but I had to tell him the truth. I went to the court to try to fight it and it was like nothing. So I sent them a thing about, how about people like Marvin Neil who will let go of their positions because they won't lie to the kids, all right? Well, that's okay. And finally, in First Timothy, it says that the law is not made for the unrighteous, for the righteous, but for the unrighteous.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Next, Mr. Tom Noblet, followed by Mr. Garth Elliott.
Mr. Noblet. You're welcome.
Where's that, where's that film thing at?
Right there. Flip, flip, Tom.
My name is Tom Noblet.
Tom, can you flip that over so we can see? We got, if you want that backside. There you go.
Oh, that's the way it goes. All right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Tom Noblet. I reside at 5389 Leon Drive, Sun Valley, Nevada. I, I gave the letter to Mrs. Herman from a, some kind of a charity outfit from the police department. I don't know whether it's phony or not, or how many has been going on, but she's got it. She's, take a look at it. This is a picture of my easement. There's a car parked there. Most of the time, there's three or four cars. Two days ago, they had a junked Reno police car.
Mr. Noblet, can you talk into the microphone thing?
They had a junked Reno police car sitting there and they had two sitting up in the yard. And this is a junk truck sitting there and you can see a tent. He put a tent there to block, rope the yard up. There's high weeds, dead limbs everywhere. I mean, everywhere. One of them limbs is going to come down, kill a kid. Guess whose fault it's going to be? It's going to be the county commission's fault. Yes. This is a picture of the road. Here's a car. This is my land. It's not the county's. I'm paying taxes on it. You can see the high weeds back there. There's some debt. Forgive me, but I only, I only had three pictures and I couldn't get them developed. They changed the industry around on me. So the only place you can get it developed is down south. Any rate, this is what I'm faced with every day. The other day, he called the police on me, tried to get me arrested for trying to run one of his drug agents down. I did not do this. It's lucky I had a witness with me and she told us, he missed him by six feet. I says, I know her good. Well, the police officer knew me, so he, he let it go. I don't know what they did about it, but he's running up down the neighborhood, telling everybody what a bad boy I am and the next poor neighbor run his ass off. So I'm just a little sick of this. I need you guys' help with this badly. I think we, I, what I think we need to do is we need to change a few ordinances around. These ordinances are very, very weak. That car there in this picture here is trespassing. He's on my land and there's nothing I can do about it. Then, then they changed, when I called the, the people that's in charge of easements, they changed it.
Yeah.
They told me it wasn't a public, it was an easement. Now it's a public real. They changed it. I don't know how they did it, but they changed it.
Thank you, Mr. Noblet. Can you wrap it up?
Can I have an additional minister?
I'm sorry, not today. We have an extra, we'll have an extra, we'll have another public comment at the end of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Noblet.
And Mr. Noblet, can I please get the pictures for the record over here?
I'm just sick of this. I'm telling.
Next, I have Mr. Garth Elliott.
Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Noblet, Mr. Noblet, right over here. Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, you can obviously see Tom's frustration. I'm here to help Tom out this morning. I've been aware of the situation for five, six years. 1994, I sat for a year on a home occupation. We've visiting all the county's home occupation standards. This guy, his next door neighbor's breaking all of it. He's running a business, a scrap business out of his home in Sun Valley. A few years back, I sat for two years on your nuisance committee. A long two years to revise all your nuisance ordinance. His next door neighbor's breaking all those with impunity. Nothing's happening. This guy, when I started coming over there and looking at Tom's situation, he had a pile of stuff, six, eight feet tall in his yard, that Tom had to deal with every day. It's a, it's a bad situation. I'm here today where, one of those deals where the spirit is willing, but the flesh is weak. I'd rather be doing something else right now because it's not a good morning for me, but Tom needs help. The county is letting him down completely. Code enforcement is letting him down completely. You need to look at what's happening here, get involved. He's got two commissioners out there and they're as involved as they can be. I'm hoping for more involvement with his two commissioners in the valley and let's see what happens. But he is being let down by the system. There's enough in place, believe me, starting in 94. We put enough in place. No outdoor storage and a host of other things that if you run a business out of your house, you can't have. He's breaking all this. Now he's encroaching on Tom's property and has been for two or three years now with impunity. I think Tom should step it up and take this guy to court, but Tom's trying to be a nice neighbor and not escalate things. And he's, he's doing as good as humanly possible for, for Tom. But please, we need to get involved. We need to make sure that the people that are being paid as county employees to do their job are actually doing their job. And I don't really, I can't really say for a fact that this happened. I think there's some, some stuff that's getting dropped through the cracks. So let's close up those cracks and, and see what we can do for Tom. I got 30 seconds left. I saw a deal this morning where our great President Trump was in front of 40,000 Boy Scouts and they weren't yelling anti-country and anti-Trump slogans. They were chanting USA. The pride that these kids had in the USA was phenomenal for change. Of course, the, the, the media had harped on the fact that he used the word hell, which I don't know, to my standards, is not much of a cuss word. That's kind of the low end of the cuss word, but they had to fixate on the word hell instead of, that these kids had great pride, country pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Next, I have Ms. Alexis Motera? Motera? Motarex. I'm sorry.
It's okay. It happens all the time. Alexis Motarex with the Nevada Chapter AGC. And we're just here in support of the appointment of Scott Smith to the Truckee River Flood Control Project Needs Committee. He's eminently qualified and then invested in this community and we hope you look upon his application favorably.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Jeff Church.
And Mr. Church provided me with a handout, which I'll distribute to the board.
Great.
You want both?
Good morning, folks. Jeff Church, resident of Reno, Washoe County. Washoe's 2017 budget, if I read right, predicted a 7.5% annual increase in revenue. To the shock of some, CT tax has dropped dramatically. That means sales tax. While overall sales tax rose 4.6% statewide in the last reporting period, it was down 3.8%. That's down in Washoe County. Car sales, what they call category 441, was up 20% in Carson, a whopping incredible 47.6% in Lyon County, but in Washoe County, it was down 8.6%. Clearly, the WC1 taxpayers voted with their wallets. How much lost tax revenue is that and how much will it continue to be? Now, Washoe County is set to appoint a person to the flood control committee. The shoddy staff report on item 13 is appalling. First, as reflected in the staff report, I am not aware of any attempt to notify the community of an opening or to reach out to the best qualified candidates. I would like to be considered for that position. I also understand that the agenda item is wrong, that Mr. Sean Carey has removed himself from consideration. So that leaves only one person for you to consider because you didn't put it out for public. I have a copy of an email that I'm submitting on the record dated July 20th, 12:25 PM. I sent it to numerous Washoe County officials, asking that I be considered for the committee. So I'm asking, why am I ignored? Why is the staff report not reflect my interest? Why was it not put out for more public opinion? It's appalling and it's wrong and I think you have a serious issue. You need to take that off the agenda for a future date and consider all applicants. Moving on, I note that the appalling staff report states there's no fiscal impact from that committee appointment. Well, that's short sighted. The long-term impact from the committee's decision is huge. It's taxes, it's fees. And I'm also shocked to learn that that committee can impose via the authority a fee without any public vote or permission of the Board of Commissioners. I was shocked when I read that part. But the legislature granted to that committee the authority to, for them to impose fees. It doesn't come back to you. It doesn't, it's just done through the authority. So once again, please consider me for that position. In the remaining few seconds, I do want to have a more positive note. If you saw on the front page of the Reno Gazette, they're adopting an ordinance about parking in electric car charging stations and I hope you do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Next, I have Mr. George Lee.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Timer?
Oh, George Lee, 3506 Brassie Drive. I stand here before you to oppose. I know you guys are, you particularly are on the RSCBA and so I oppose the use of the golf course as of site for the new high school. We're not against building new high school. We want, everybody in Washoe County, as far as I know, wants better education. But we want tax dollars to be used correctly, you know, to be used in a way that's frugal, you know, yet gets the job done. As far as we can tell, the, the school board doesn't have a Plan B for what they would do if it turns out that the feasibility studies fall through for the golf course. The second thing is, they already have people signed up to be the constructors, but yet no bidding has been put out. No low bid, you know, we're supposed to go for low bid, right? We're not supposed to just give it to somebody and then let the, let the project run wild. That, the idea of no Plan B, I mean, there's places they could build. We were up last night at the, at the middle school up in Sun Valley and there's lots of land up there where it could be built that BLM currently controls. The real need is in, in Spanish Springs, in Sun Valley, places where they're talking about 500 new units in Sun Valley. They're talking about 1,500 new units and that's the rumors I've heard anyway, in Spanish Springs. And, but down here in the basin, I don't hear about huge complexes going in and lots of new students and new need for the high school. Let's see. There's, there is an opportunity here to where a a conjunction or, you know, going together with TMCC and expanding the high school that is at TMCC now and using that has many advantages. One, it would up the graduation rate and up the movement on into college because students would be associated with that, going to it. They wouldn't be going to a new place. They'd be going to the high school at TMCC and the land is already public land. It doesn't have to be acquired and grant money could be acquired for building parking structures, things like that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. Next, I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse and I'm also the United States President. I still live at the same place. Nothing has been changed at all. Still hanging people by the neck. They have to be dead. The only way that they could do it, chop up their bodies right after they're dead with the electric chainsaw. Also, the MRIs are still in my living room. They're still being used to kill and murder people so you can have your chopped heads. Nothing has changed at all. They're still on the property. They still think that they can get away with murder and of course, they are getting away with murder. You people put us to sleep and then you decide to chop us up or maybe send in snakes in order to get your skull, isn't it? Yes, it is because you all had your lethal injections. So how else are you going to get your body parts? How else are you going to get your human bodies to take off yours? Because you got the lethal injections. You know who you are. You know what you've done. You're murderers. You're bank robbers. You had to kill and murder every buddy as a teller in order for them to keep their mouth shut that you're the bank robber. Yes, I see the tellers always different every time I go inside the bank. They're never the same ones at all because you have to make sure that the bullet holes kill them. We know that you are bank robbers. I can hear it at the ATM machine. I know who you are one by one. What, 52 of you were at the ATM machine so you could get your money through my bank accounts? Oh, yes, it's the truth. That's the only way you could get money, isn't it? But that machine still has the proof that you are the person that stole all the money from my bank accounts. But you're charged embezzlement, so you have nothing again. I don't know why you keep doing it. Now, even though you were charged embezzlement 9,200 times apiece because that is not your money. That is not your bank accounts. You don't have your name on any of that.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. All right. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. And at this time, we're on to item four. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item four is our commissioner and county manager's announcements, reports, updates, requests for information or topics for future agendas of a couple of items. One, it's been brought to my attention, we recently received a letter from the office of the governor announcing that Washoe County has been awarded $178,750 from the Nevada Community Development Block Grant Program. This will come to the board at a future date. Specifically, the funds to Washoe County are in the amount of $80,000 for the Nevada Small Business Development, Business Counseling and Training Project and $98,750 for the Gerlock Economic Development Plan. These are typically for rural community projects and as I said, this will come to the board at a future date for acceptance. Additionally, we're just going to remind everyone that July is Art Town. Washoe County is a sponsor of Art Town, particularly Thursday evenings at Bartley Ranch at the Hawkins Amphitheater, various concerts through the summer for Art Town at that facility. And then finally, today, our alternate public defender's office is hosting an open house from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. They are celebrating 10 years of existence as an office.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have any comments from Commissioner John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I would like staff to work on creating ordinances that, so when we do have charging stations in the unincorporated county for electric vehicles, that is already on the books and it should be modeled after the city of Reno, so there's no confusion of what the rules are with electric vehicle charging stations. And then I would like to ask for staff to meet with Mr. Noblet, with a neighborhood mediator, as well as the sheriff's office and social services, to make sure he's receiving all the, the attention that he should be getting as well as removal of the vehicle that's trespassing on his property or at least to explain to him if that is not a trespass issue and that a report be brought back to me within a week of that, if we could do that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Herman?
I would do that and like to see that result too. Thank you.
Great. All right. Seeing nothing further from any of the commissioners, we'll bring it back to the board and this will take us to item five, our consent agenda for this morning. At this time, what I'd like to do is take one of the items out of consent this morning. It would be item 5B2 and have it heard separately first before our restorer remainder of our consent agenda. So if that is okay with the board? Okay? All right. So, Mr. Manager, if you would take us to 5B2, please.
Thanks, sir. Item 5B2 is a proclamation. This is a proclamation proclaiming heartfelt gratitude to Deputy Rick Pillen for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Washoe County. And if we could
Sure.
You want to read the
Yeah, absolutely.
To the podium, read the proclamation and if we could ask Deputy Pillen to come on down and bring, bring whoever else who went to accompany you.
Come on, the sister needs to come also, and the brother-in-law, and the whole family, come on, you guys, come on down. This is a big honor for a great guy.
Sir? Good morning. Bring the whole family, let's get everybody down here. It's a great day. It's good family to have here, both work and real family, right? All right. Come back here, we'll sit, we'll get back here, and we'll get all situated here. All right, guys, come over here, come on back here. Rick, come stand right here next to me. All right, so this is a special morning, this is a proclamation that to, to basically note the successes and, and in service of an individual who has been with the sheriff family for many, many years, and as you can see by the support behind him, and by the support of his family, he has done and committed a lifelong, lifelong service to our county, and through many, many years of service, continues to be a major force at the sheriff's office. So it gives me great honor to read this proclamation today. Whereas Deputy Rick Pillen has dedicated nearly 37 years of service to citizens of the, of Washoe County. And whereas Deputy Pillen was responsible for revising the Field Training Officer Program in Patrol and developed the Patrol Orientation Program to teach procedures to new deputies entering Patrol. And whereas, the Patrol Orientation Program Deputy Pillen created is still in use today, and has acclimated hundreds of deputies assigned to Patrol Division for over the years. And whereas Deputy Pillen was presented with two Meritorious Service Medals for his development of these two programs. And whereas Deputy Pillen has served in numerous assignments during his career, to include 12 years in Motors, 3.5 years in Consolidated Narcotics Unit, 7.5 years as an instructor at two different police academies, and 27 years as a range master. And whereas Deputy Pillen was a member of the Special Weapons and Tactics. And whereas Deputy Pillen retired with the Master Deputy Designation, a title given to him by his peers, superiors, peers and supervisors for his vast knowledge, experience, and dedication. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners proclaims their heartfelt gratitude and thanks to Deputy Rick Pillen for many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Washoe County. Dated this 25th day of July 2017, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chairman of Washoe County Commission. Congratulations. Deputy?
I'm not into speeches.
Come on, you gotta say a few words. You gotta say a few words.
I just need to thank my family and these guys. I can't do these.
Hey, we understand. Congratulations, congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Master Deputy Pillen leaves the podium, may I say a couple of words?
Absolutely, I'm sorry Commissioner Hartung, please.
Master Deputy Pillen, I cannot begin to express my debt of gratitude, not only personally, but, but of course, I feel from the Commission, for your many years of service to us. The loss, while I recognize you are retiring and going off to do so many fun things, the loss is really ours, and especially at the NNL EA. I was there at the, at the final graduation, the amount of, of knowledge and assistance that you've imparted to those young people is, is just amazing, and it will be virtually impossible for us to replace you anytime soon, and I just want to thank you so much, sir. I, I am greatly in your debt, and it's honored to have you here today.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's grab, let's grab a picture, let's get everybody up here.
All right. Here we go, and in three, two. All right, and then one more. There we go, three, two. All right. Wait, it's not taken. This one's not taken. There we go, here we go, three, two.
Not at all.
Thank you Deputy Pillen, thank you family members, we appreciate it. Have a wonderful retirement, enjoy. Congratulations, thank you for your service. Okay, so, I'm going to need, I'd like to take a motion to accept this part, or do we, can we leave it in consent? Liberally? Leave it in consent? We're going to leave it in there? Okay.
All right.
All right, so, looking for a motion to accept consent agenda.
Move approval of all the consent items?
I have a motion. Do we, I do have public comment. Can I get
Oh.
Just, we're trying to get through technical difficulties here. Okay, so I do have public comment and consent at this time, I have Mrs. Kathy, Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I wanted to talk on 5B5. The Fire Protection District Chief Fiscal Officer Cynthia Vance as trustees on the Washoe County Officer Post Employment Benefits. Trust Fund Board of Directors. Well, I just wanted to tell you, you know, the Fire Protection District is going down. There has been so many volunteer workers on this force with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection. And I just wanted to let you know that they are all dead. Because you can't get rid of one person, the one person who does all the murders by setting people on fire, by setting the vehicles on fire, and make sure that the persons, who knows about this person, who sets fires, and make sure that they are blackened, and also their vehicle blackened until dead. That's why you're all here, isn't it? Just to make sure that the victims are dead. The victims have no chance at all. They will be raped, won't they? Yes, they will. Their bodies will be chopped up with the electric chainsaw. Then you throw them inside a vehicle and make sure that the vehicle burns while the bodies are chopped up inside the vehicle. What's going to be left? It's shown right now. That's what's going to be left of a human body. You really don't have a heart, because you pull our hearts out of our bodies in order for you to have one. You pull out our livers, you also steal our gallbladders. Isn't that the only way that you can live since your lethal injections were all inside your bodies? It certainly is, isn't it? By wearing somebody else's chopped head, oh, now you can speak English. Well, I know you're all from the Mexico border, you're still in the United States, and you still think that you can take over the populations wherever you go. Yes, I've heard that the cities, the large cities, only have less than 100 people now of the United States. Because you think that you can do it
Thank you, Ms. Brand.
More.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, bring it back to the board at this time. We have a motion by Vice Chair Burke Bigler, seconded by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and there was an aye from Commissioner Hartung, correct?
Yes, sir, it was, thank you.
Thank you, all right. All right, so we are moving on. At this time, we have an appearance from, by Julie Hunter, we're on to Agenda Item Six.
Well, the presenter's approaching, the dais, I'll pass out a handout from them.
Yeah, let's, if we can, while we're, while we're waiting for you guys to get set up here, we're going to do a quick block vote, while we have Commissioner Hartung with us on the phone. So Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move that we put in a block vote, items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Seven, I have a motion for seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 for block.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hartung. Mr. Manager? Mr. Manager?
Okay. Item seven is a recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners retroactively acknowledge the grand award from the State of Nevada Administrative Office of the Courts to the Second Judicial District Court in the amount of $915,430, no match required to support the specialty court programs effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and direct the Controller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item eight is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and HDR Engineering for the preparation of emergency action plans for, one, the North Spanish Springs Sediment Basin, and update to EAP for the North Spanish Springs Flood Detention Facility, two, Herman Dam, three, Sierra Sage Ponds, and four, Huffaker Affluent Storage Reservoir, in the amount of $164,447,000. Recommendation nine is a recommendation to approve, sorry, item nine is a recommendation to approve the sole source purchase of one new Lerue Model D65 Loader Mounted Snow Blower from Snowquip in the amount of $175,295 to replace existing unit number 7294 assigned to Washoe County Roads that has reached the end of its useful life. Item 10 is action to approve retroactive and continued purchases for needed supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services from various suppliers that have or will exceed in the, in the aggregate $100,000 for fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18, but will remain within available adopted budget funding. All such purchases will continue to be subject to and in accordance with provisions of the Local Government Purchasing Act. Item 11 is a recommendation to approve Washington County's indebtedness report and accompanying schedules for fiscal year 2016-17. And item 12 is a recommendation to approve the use of general fund contingency in the amount of $534,835 to cover mosquito spraying expenses related to flooded areas for fiscal year 2017 through 2018, and direct Controller's Office to make the appropriate budget appropriation transfers.
Great. Ms. Hunter, Ms. Brand, I have actually some public comments, so I'm going to have, I'm going to have them come up really quick and utilize the podium, and then we'll call you right up. I apologize, my mistake. So I have signed in for public comment, at this time I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse signed in.
And Ms. Brandhorse, for the record, had signed in on items number seven and 10 in the block vote.
Great, thank you.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. Let's see, the State of Nevada Administrative Office of the Courts to the Second Judicial District Court, the amount of $915,430. What does that mean? It doesn't mean nothing to you, because they're lawsuits, doesn't it? Your lawsuit has not been paid, so you have to make sure that your lawsuits are going to be paid by that much money, isn't it? To support the specialty court programs. I'll tell you what the specialty programs are. Children. The children have been suffering a lot more. You have to take a steamroller and make sure that they are steamrolled in the streets, sidewalks. They are crying already. They wanted help. You don't give them the help at all. No, you won't. Because you want to make sure that the victim of that child inside that child is dead. What was it you said on that property where I live? Inheritance, wasn't it? Yes, it's inheritance. You need all their money, you need all the things that they have bought with their payroll checks. So you kidnap them and make sure that you get what you want from their payroll checks. But they are tortured to death. I'm now on number 10. The approved retroactive and continued purchases for needed supplies, materials, equipment, contractual services from various suppliers that have or will exceed in the aggregate Oh, yes, that's your lawsuits again, isn't it? Because don't forget, you're the one, you're not even a doctor, you're not even a nurse, you're not even the person that's supposed to be taking care of this person at all. But you're going to supply the material that the person needs, so you would actually get away with it, won't it? The equipment has to be with you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further public comment, bring it back to the board. We do have a motion by Vice Chair Burke Bigler, seconded by Commissioner Hartung. I will call for the vote now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Marsha, and Commissioner Burke Bigler is absent currently, so motion carries unanimously with four votes. All right. We are back down to Mr. Manager, on to item six.
Item six is an appearance by Julie Hunter and Frederick Steinem, which is a presentation and part of discussion of the Chapter of Nevada Chapter of American Planning Association 2017 Nevada Planning Guide, including an overview of Nevada Leadership Program at the University of Nevada Reno.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Commission. For the record, Frederick Steinem, Chapter Secretary for the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, as well as an assistant professor with the University Nevada Reno in the Center for Economic Development. On behalf of the chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program, part of the University Center for Economic Development, it is my pleasure to present each one of you today your very own copy of the recently published February 2017 Nevada Planning Guide as produced jointly between the chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program. The mission of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, as the state chapter for the American Planning Association, is to provide elected and appointed officials, government executives and staff, members of the public, and private sector interests with general professional with general professional development and educational opportunities as it relates to the wide world of planning within the state of Nevada. The Nevada Leadership Program, part of the University Center for Economic Development, shares that mission in that we attempt to offer non-traditional formal education to individuals interested in learning more about the nuts and bolts of government administration in Nevada. The guide itself was developed jointly between the Chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program and the Center for Economic Development. Over the course of about a year and a half to two years, we had eight volunteer full-time writers developing the guide, which resulted in the seven chapters that are included in the guide in front of you. The guide consists of various chapters on things like Nevada's open meeting laws, the state code of administrative ethics, as well as specific items related to master planning, land use planning, and other elements of planning within the state of Nevada. It is our pleasure to present this guide to you at no charge. We also offer the guide online on the Chapter's website for no charge for download and printing of anyone that's interested in it. I've also included some additional materials in the guide, including upcoming professional development opportunities being offered jointly between the Chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program, as well as some general information regarding the University Center for Economic Development and the work we do in partnership with the Chapter and other organizations throughout the state. My pleasure now to introduce Julie Hunter, who serves as the Chapter's Planning Official Development Officer.
Thank you, Fred, and good morning. Thanks for having us here. As a professional, I'm Julie Hunter, for the record. I'm the Senior Planner in the Air Quality Management Division for the Washoe County Health District, and recently appointed as a Planning Official Development Officer. And as the, or a poto, it's just fun to say that, I serve as a reference person to the planning, to planning resources for elected and appointed officials, and help coordinate the exchange of information and ideas. So what I can do is provide information and materials to planning officials in the form of materials like you have here, the Nevada Planning Guide, and also offer opportunities and workshops. So if there's any, any topic of interest or a subject matter expert that you would like to hear, we could provide workshops or social events, or bring those subject matter experts to you. So please feel free to contact myself. You have information in the Nevada Planning Guide, or the Nevada American, Chapter of American Planning Association. So that's about all I have, and any questions?
No. I think, so that's it for your presentation today, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We know you have a busy day.
All right. Well, great, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Jung.
Hi, and thanks both of you to be here, Dr. Steinem and Ms. Hunter. I have a question, and I just was flipping through your planning guide. If this body or your group does anything in terms of contributing to affordable housing, we know right now the rents are increasing. I just had a friend whose rent ran up $300 a month, which is really unsustainable, especially people that are on a fixed income. So where does, where do you stand in that, and what would you recommend like a county government could do? Is it a repository? Do we have developers pay an extra fee to create affordable housing? I mean, where do you stand on that as planners?
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. In regard specifically to affordable housing development, it certainly is an item of interest for both the Chapter and the work we do through the University Center for Economic Development. As both an officer with the Chapter and faculty with the university, in fact, just recently I gave a presentation to the Washoe County Design Review Committee on potential strategies of improving the stock of affordable quality housing within Washoe County. Both the Center and, of course, the Chapter are educational organizations, which prevents either one of us from taking formal positions and recommendations. What we do have, however, both through the Center and the Chapter, is a variety of resources on like best practices to encourage affordable housing development, be it along transit-oriented development corridors such as the TOD, running along Virginia Street from the university, past McCarran Boulevard on the south end of town, or the East Fourth Street to Praterway Corridor. Many of the staff at Sparks Reno, Washoe County RTC, are APA members and members of the Nevada Chapter, and it really is the job of the Chapter to provide them with the best practices so that they can go ahead and then implement them in their day-to-day work. Our upcoming conference on October 1 through 4 will actually have a number of sessions specifically focused on affordable housing, so we'll have some area experts, as well as experts from outside the area, come in to speak with our members about what they can do specifically to encourage affordable quality housing within the Reno-Sparks metro area.
Would you suggest that an elected official attend this for the, to absorb that subject matter expertise, or rely on staff for that, or?
Come one, come all. We certainly welcome.
I'm not a planner, but I want to get our arms around this before it really gets out of the barn.
I would say probably about 30 to 40% of our attendees to the annual conference on a regular basis are non-APA members, just because there is subject material there that's applicable to them, either from a policymaking standpoint or an administrative management perspective. So I would certainly encourage not only yourself, but all the members of the Commission and the county, if there is interest in our sessions, to attend the conference, which is in Carson City this year.
Right, and that's, that's great, since we're so close. Will there be a syllabus coming out soon with the sessions?
We're still trying to fill session topics, but yeah, there'll be, that will be online, and that will be the website that you have in the planning guide. And I just would add, as the Planning Official Development Officer, we also encourage planners or commission, elected and appointed officials to even come and speak at these. So if you're interested in speaking at a topic, we highly encourage elected and appointed officials to come in and present at these conferences. So keep that in mind, too.
Great, thank you. I'll definitely be there as an attendee. I don't know what I would speak about, but I plan on going, just so the board knows when it comes to, I want to do a deeper dive on affordable housing for this region. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nothing further. Thank you so much, thank you for your time, and we appreciate the presentation today and all the information. Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the board. We are now on to item 13. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item 13 is a recommendation to appoint one person, either Scott Smith or Sean Carey, as the Washoe County Commission's Single Member to the Truckee River Flood Control Project Needs Committee for a term to start when appointed through April 2, 2018. Ms. Chair, I would note that we have received, since the publication of the Agenda, we've received a letter from Mr. Carey. He's asked to have himself removed from consideration. We also, staff and I believe commissioners, also received an email, again, this was after the posting of the Agenda, from Mr. Jeff Church, expressing his interest in being appointed to this committee.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, both of those documents have been provided to the clerk for the record.
Great, thank you. And I do have public comment signed in on this, and I do have Mr. Jeff Church signed in, but I do not see him in the audience. And so we will.
He must have just left.
We must have left for the day, so we will bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I make motion that we recommend to appoint Scott Smith to the Washoe County Commission's Single Member to the Truckee River Flood Control Project. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Vice Chair Burke Bigler, and seconded by Commissioner Jung. Seeing no further discussion at this time, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Is Commissioner?
Commissioner Hartung has left the meeting. He did notify me, so he will know he's no longer in attendance. So, all right, motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item 14.
Mr. Chair, item 14 is a presentation discussion regarding the 2017 Nevada Legislative Session, and our Government Affairs Manager, Jamie Rodriguez, is here to present this item.
Good morning, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Be prepared to dazzle us with our amazing legislative report.
I'm going to try very hard, yes, sir.
Fantastic, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, so this legislative session, we tracked a total of 464 bills. That is out of the 1,155 that were introduced, so we tracked a little over half the bills this session. Of those, 383 bills that we tracked actually made it through the legislative session. The governor vetoed a total of 41 bills. We cared about eight of those. So we had little under 380 bills total that passed that impacted us one way or another that we were at least tracking. Today, we're going to do just a brief overview of the fiscal impact to the county from this session, and then we'll do a highlight of some of the larger bills that impacted us. So in front of you now, this is the estimated fiscal impact to Washoe County. The first bill there, AB 97, that's the rape kit bill. For now, I'm just going to go into the fiscal impact. We'll cover the bill shortly. So for the first fiscal year, which is this fiscal year, 1718, you'll note that it's $1.642 million, and then every year going forward, it is $1.342 million. The first year, the additional $300,000 is for lab renovations that the sheriff needs for the additional forensic analysts to do, to actually process kits and other items. $721,000 of that is for the personnel needed, and then $621,000 of that is for the consumables, items actually needed to test the kits. The next one, AB 472, this is regarding juvenile services. There's a statewide system starting in FY 1920, FY 1920, for any juvenile in the system so that counties and everybody can communicate back and forth when people move. So the $45,000 annually will be for our buy-in to the state system. SB 79, currently judges can ask for their information to be pulled from public record and be, become confidential, excuse me. SB 79 expanded that to specific, or certain District Attorney Office employees, public defender employees, as well as district court employees, so that they can also have their information pulled from public record. That fiscal impact there is from the recorder's office, as well as the clerk's office, of time to go through and redact any information if a court order is approved by that personnel. SB 176, that is the body camera bill. Again, we'll go into some of the details shortly, but that fiscal impact, the approximate $175,000 a year, that is just for the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office. So when we go into the bill, there's other entities that will have to be paid for when we do the E-911, or potential E-911 increase, but that cost is for the body cameras for the sheriff's office, and data storage for the district attorney's office so they can maintain any records that they need to. And then at the bottom there, you'll note, so we have 21 bills that either had minimal fiscal impact, or the impact could not be determined. So either it's, like I said, a very minimal amount will go into, or AB, excuse me, 297, an e-commerce bill that's going to be a very small amount that will impact us, but until we determine how and what we're going to do, we don't know what that impact will be. And then we have 30 bills that have a potential future impact on the county, so not this fiscal year, not next fiscal year, but potentially going forward, there could be an impact on the county that we would have to cover. So this now, we are at the estimated revenue for Washoe County. AB 169, this created a flat fee for recording statewide. This was pushed primarily from real estate develop, well, not real estate developers, excuse me, the lending companies, who were having tough times at closing because the final amount, the recording fee, would be higher, they'd have to delay the closing of the house so that they could go back and get a correct check, what have you. So it created a flat fee across the state. Our recorder worked with recorders across the state to create an amount that they felt comfortable with, and so it'll be additional revenue to us, but the amount was picked to help the more rural counties so that they didn't have a loss of income from this now flat fee. AB 519, that is $1.7 million. That'll come to us from the Secretary of State's office for, or to assist us in the purchasing of new voting machines. So this fiscal year, we budgeted, or you approved a budget for $1.9 million, so this will obviously go towards that amount. And then lastly, SB 519, that $15,000, that was a projected shortfall in our Washoe County Child Welfare account that the state helped us with. Lastly, we've got at the bottom there, there's five bills that the county can apply for a portion of a state appropriation for different programs. There was a total of three bills that reduced costs to the county, so there will be a savings there that we can't yet determine, and then we have two bills that will likely have additional revenue to the county, but again, that would be future, so we're not sure how much or when that would be.
Yeah, we're going to reserve questions till the end. Well, let's click questions while we're.
Do you want to do questions now?
Yeah, can we move questions?
Absolutely.
Vice Chair, per favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Curious about the estimated fiscal impact to Washoe County, the total budget for increase for 1718. That is not included in the budget.
Right.
And, and, but there is money to impact, there is other money that's coming in to impact that, so it's really not a total hit of $2 million to our budget?
I'm sorry, for this slide?
Previous.
Oh.
No, the previous slide.
Previous.
For the estimated fiscal impact to Washoe County, for the previous slide. So you see, on the fiscal year 1718, there's $2,420,000 impact.
Right.
That's not, all of that's not been budgeted previously.
Correct.
But there are dollars that we are going to get in fiscal year 1718 that will offset this amount, or is that a?
Not for, not for fiscal year 1718. Well, potentially for fiscal year 1718, let me correct that. So in AB 97, there was a total of $5 million set aside to assist with the backlog of rape kits, and speaking with the sheriff's office, they believe there's a potential that some of that could be used towards possibly the lab update, as well as potentially helping with staff coming on. I'll also note for that one, it'll probably be less this fiscal year. They have to hire, I believe it was, six forensic specialists. They're not going to have them for the full fiscal year, excuse me, seeing how we're already in this fiscal year and they haven't yet been hired. Those are very difficult jobs to find people to fill, and it honestly may be a year or two before we're able to fill all of those positions anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so continue, thank you.
Okay, no problem. These five bills, so these allow for funding to come to the county, but at this point, we won't know what that funding is. SB 319 allows for an additional dollar per the recording of documents that'll help go towards indigent funding. SB 176, again, that's the body camera bill. That does allow for our E-911 charge to go from 25 cents to a dollar. Currently, we raise about $1.6 million with that 25 cents, but as I mentioned earlier, the 175,000 that we show does not include what all will have to be encompassed in that increase of the E-911. It'll also have to cover Reno Police Department, Sparks Police Department, and their municipal courts. And as far as I understand, there's also some additional funding they're hoping to get actually towards the enhanced 911 phone system as well. So that'll be coming back to you. SB 182 allows for the sheriff to now charge for servicing of eviction notices that used to be given to constables. Constables could charge for that, but sheriffs could not, so now they can, so that'll be an impact to us coming forward, but again, we don't know how many of those will come forward. SB 305, this is another one regarding recording of documents. Currently, we charge $3 for indigent funding. We can now increase that to up to $6 to help cover some of the indigent legislation that came forward this session. And then lastly, SB 47, this allows for fees from marijuana cultivation, production, and retail sales to come back to the county. We can do up to 3% of the gross revenue that they produce. And we'll actually go into that bill here. That's one of the first ones. So do we have any questions before?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. So SB 47, this bill sets the state tax, excuse me, state sales tax at 15% for cultivation and 10% for retail. Of that, $5 million will be set aside, and that will be given to all local jurisdictions. The system of how we will apply for a portion of that $5 million is still being worked out by the Department of Taxation, so we don't know how exactly that will work, but that will come back to us, a portion of that will come back to us for an appropriation to reimburse us for our costs of the initiative. We are able to establish a one-time application fee for marijuana establishments going forward, and then we have a business license fee that we can either do a flat fee, a percentage of the gross revenue, or a combination of the two. However, however we calculate that, it cannot equal more than 3% of the gross revenue, and that is at all levels of marijuana establishment. So that is at cultivation, production. So, that is at cultivation, production, and retail. The next one, SB 344, so this establishes state standards for packaging and production of any marijuana or marijuana product. Some basics, can't appeal to children. Packaging has to be transparent, has to state how much THC is in the product, has to state, keep out of reach of children, this is a marijuana product. It restricts the amount of marijuana sold based on the amount of THC in said product. The basic, you know, the ounce of straight marijuana is easily measurable, but if you're buying a brownie or marijuana product, an ounce is not a realistic measurable amount. So, that's how they address that issue. They also set forth some rules on advertising of dispensaries, can't be near schools, they can only show certain items, you know, can't appeal to children again. And then, more importantly, it makes it so that we cannot create any standards that are more restrictive than whatever the state has done. So, it gives us our bottom, there's some things we can do, but it can't be any more restrictive than what the state has outlined. The last one under marijuana, AB 422, so this moves all the responsibilities of regulating marijuana from Department of Health and Human Services over to taxation. It also made a couple of changes regarding medical marijuana patients and their cards. We'll go forward. So, next, we've got the public safety, AB 97, this is the rape kit bill. Requires that all sexual assault forensic evidence kits collected. They must be submitted to the forensic lab within 30 days of that collection, and once we receive it, we have 120 days to test the kits. We are required now to put all DNA profiles into CODIS, as well as the state DNA base, database, and we have to give an annual report to the legislature of how many forensic kits we received, how many were tested, how many had results, and so forth. That does, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier, Commissioner Burke Bigler, it's $3 million allocated, not $5 million in this bill. There's additional allocations in other legislation, but this bill specifically gives $3 million allocation to assist with the testing of backlogged rape kits. It does give us, we can get reimbursement for 10 kits, or $10,000, whichever is less, for the costs associated with actually collecting the kits, which is a small amount considering the overall fiscal impact, but it's a reimbursement that we can get. Next is the body camera bill, AB, that should be SB, excuse me, my notes are wrong, SB 176. So, this allows the Board of County Commissioners to increase our E-911 fee from 25 cents to a dollar. The funds can be used now for the purchase and maintenance of body or vehicle cameras for law enforcement. It makes some changes to our E-911 board. It now mandates membership of the sheriff's office, Reno and Sparks Police Department, as well as each of their municipal courts. So, an ordinance will be coming to you soon, I believe, mandating the change in the E-911 board for the new members, as well as allowing them to look into the creation of a new five-year master plan for the body camera purchases. That five-year plan has to be approved before we can increase the amount. The second half of the bill then requires all uniformed police officers who interact with the public regularly to wear body cameras. That'll begin in July of next year, July 1 of 2018.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thanks. Jamie, does that include the sheriff deputies who are in the jail?
It does not. It's at our discretion, but per mandate of the bill, they are not required to wear them, no.
Thank you.
Yes. And then, the last one under public safety here is AB 297. So, this creates an e-commerce zone at the sheriff's office, which basically, if you are setting up a purchase from somebody on Craigslist or any other internet site, there will be a designated area at the sheriff's office that you guys will create and put together that will allow people to go there to exchange goods so that they can feel safer. The bill actually only mandates a sign, it's up to the Board of County Commissioners if they want to do more than that, if they want to do video cameras. I believe the city of Henderson has hours that the e-commerce zone is open, and they have personnel then that staff it. We are waived, the county, as well as the sheriff, is waived of any liability in association with any transaction that occurs at that location. Next, we've got some employee changes. So, AB 8384, excuse me, it's considered the "ban the box" bill. This means that we are not able to inquire at the point of application if the person has any sort of a criminal history. It allows us to ask at the point of final interview, or upon conditional offer of employment. At that time, you'll have to, we'll have to consider the severity of the crime, when the crime happened, if, how it impacts the position as well, and any state or federal guidelines that exempt that person from being able to apply for that position. It does exclude peace officers, firefighters, and court personnel. They are allowed to ask that at the point of application. SB 361, this is for employees or their family member if they are victims of domestic violence. They are entitled to 160 hours, paid or unpaid, during a 12-month period to, to address any issues that could be associated with that domestic violence incident. So, that includes counseling, counseling, court dates, possibly having to move out of residence, what have you. We are able to ask for some sort of proof, so that would be a police order, protection order, application, what have you. We have to maintain the records for two years, and we have to report those, excuse me, to the Labor Commission. And then, the last portion of the bill required reasonable accommodations for employees who may be such victims, which is a county rule that we already have. So, if they have to change shifts, or departments, what have you, that's something that Washoe County already does. SB 552, so this makes some substantial changes to the public employees' benefits program. So, it's going to slowly remove the abatement that we get from PEBs for the employees that we cover. So, this year, there will be no change. Next fiscal year, we'll pay 25% of their premium that we are responsible for. FY 1920, we'll pay 50%, 2021, we'll pay 75%. FY 2122 and forward, we'll pay 100% of that subsidy. Currently, we have approximately 290 people that we're paying for. Those payments do range anywhere from $2 to $700 per employee, based on the amount of time for which they worked for the county. Currently, our bill this month was $23,000. We don't anticipate any real increases in the number of employees that should be coming on. The only way that would happen, if an employee worked for the county for a period of time, and then left, went to the state, and ultimately retired from the state, they would then, we would then be responsible for that time that they worked for the county. However, given changes of insurance rates and what have you, there's really no way to determine what that impact to the county will be. SJR 6, so this, this will have to go back next session, and then go on to the ballot the following year, so we've got some time before this one would go forward. But it would change the minimum wage to $9.40 an hour, and then, the rate would increase by $1.15 every year until the rate reached $14 total. Next, under elections, we've got AB 519, that gave us our $1.7 million from Secretary of State for the purchase of voting machines. AB 21 allows for a court to determine if a candidate is not qualified to run for that office. If so, their name must be taken off the ballot unless it has passed the deadline. There's no change there. The difference, though, is if it's after the deadline and their name is on the ballot, there are signs required to be posted at polling locations that says that person is ineligible for the office that they're going to be on the ballot for. AB 478, so this makes some changes to voter registration. Registration for the deadline by mail is the fourth Tuesday before the primary or general election. If by computer, it's the Thursday before early voting begins, and if a person registers less than 20 days prior to the election, a sample ballot does not need to be sent. Last, SB 144, so this makes changes to preregistration. If you were 17 but going to be 18 by election, you are able to preregister, you're now simply able to preregister at the age of 17. Obviously, you can't vote until you're 18 in the corresponding election, so it makes some changes there. Also allows, if a person has good cause, to have the voter registrar send somebody to their home to help them preregister to vote. Sets rules for oversee voter registration and processing of military oversee ballots. And while currently, Washoe County allows for signature cards for voters who are unable to sign their names themselves, we will now have to track how many of those signature cards we receive in an election. Next, taxes. So, SB 352, this was Senator Kikeffer's bill to help, initially, the idea was the Little Valley Fire Residence, but it'll help the flood areas as well. So, if a property is completely or partially destroyed in an event that is declared a natural disaster by the governor, they will be eligible for a tax abatement for their property taxes going forward. So, they have to fall under the guidelines, which they can't build more than 125% of the original footprint, they have to pull the building permit within a certain period of time, and it only applies to that original owner. But what will happen is, when they rebuild, when the assessor goes out and assesses the new value, the new value, excuse me, they'll then look at what the age of the old home was and adjust it accordingly, so that it would be the same depreciation rate that they had before, so that these people who lose, lose their homes in natural disasters aren't having to pay that big change.
Commissioner, Jim.
In perpetuity?
So, it is retroactive.
Really bad for county and local government.
Well, so there's-
Doesn't hurt the state at all.
There's some, there's some stipulations, so it is retroactive in that you can apply, there will be no rebate required. So, if you had a natural disaster occur in the past, and you fall within the guidelines that are set up in the bill, you can apply with the assessor's office, saying that you believe you should be able to get that abatement, and they will adjust it going forward, but you won't get any rebate or credit back for whatever has already been paid.
So, they'll depreciate it, what-
Yes.
-the old house was?
Yes.
That's, that's huge, a huge hit for us, just so you know, done by somebody who, it doesn't affect his budget at all, so.
Right. It-
How many people do you expect will take advantage of this?
We're not sure.
Have we already abated septic, I mean, building permits and fees?
Right. So, we honestly don't anticipate a large number of people being able to apply for it. So, we did not anticipate a large number of people from more recent events necessarily qualifying, and-
But going forward, we never know.
Correct.
Could, like what would happen a couple of years ago up off McCarran in all those homes.
Right.
And that really hurts the city and the county equally. All right, thank you.
No problem. So, we covered all of that one. Last one is SJR 14, so this was brought forward by Senator Ratty in an effort to help us with some of our property tax issues. So, again, this is another one that'll have to come back next session, be unchanged, and then go on the ballot going forward. So, it'll, what will happen is, your property taxes will be assessed at the time of sale, so the depreciation won't stay with the house, it'll be reassessed every time the property is sold. If it is, if it does move forward, excuse me, the legislation also requires the enactment of the Senior and Disabled Taxpayer Protection Act to help senior citizens and those who are disabled, who have very low property tax rates now, if they have to downsize or right-size their home, that they will be able to get assistance and not have a large change.
Madam Vice Chair.
So, this would propose, what we've been talking about for years, Nevada now is the only state that the depreciation stays with the house, so if that was sold, for instance, if I sell my house, it's fully depreciated, and the new purchaser would benefit from that full depreciation. This proposes to change that, so that if I sold my house, it would now be reassessed at the value of the house rather than depreciation.
That is correct, yes.
That doesn't have an impact on senior citizens unless they sell their house.
Correct. But the concept was if they have to right-size, I'll use my grandmother as an example, she purchased her home in Reno in '69, it is fully paid off, she's reached her depreciation value, it's a three-bedroom house, it's large for her. If she ever at one point in time decided that she needed a smaller home, and therefore sold her home, and then purchased a new home, the purchase of the new home would have an impact on her because now she's going to have to pay a higher tax rate, right? Because it's going to be reassessed at that value. So, the concept was to help those people who may have reached the point of depreciation, and so, their tax rate is very low, and are simply right-sizing, but because of the sale and new purchase, their tax rate would, would be reset. So, it's, there's not a lot of details on what all that would entail.
How that would work.
Yes.
And, you know, of course, I'm very concerned about seniors, and that's an issue, but that scenario you just painted fits me perfectly, because my house was built in '69, was purchased in '69. And, you know, if I sold it, it's kind of like, don't sell it. I mean, that's kind of how I feel.
Right.
I'm very concerned about seniors, I'm very concerned about people who are, you know, have a handicap that's going to protect them, or prevent them from being able to move to a new house. But the truth of the matter is, if I sell my house, trust me, I'm going to pay, I'm going to get a whole lot more money for it than I ever put into it.
Correct.
And I think that would be true of anyone who has, for the most part, anyone who has a house in '69, and it'll be interesting to see how this, this plays out, because I think that's a factor that maybe we really want to watch carefully to see just how many people who are millionaires and apply for that.
Agreed. We'll be working very closely going into next session and seeing how that comes forward, and what some of that language will be, because like I said, in the SJR, it's not clearly outlined how exactly that senior citizen disabled portion would work.
Thank you, Jamie.
Absolutely. So, we now have new boards and committees. SB 462, this allows for the Board of County Commissioners to create a panel to review GIDs. The board will consist of five members, one senate, one assembly member, and then appointment from each, the Board of County Commissioners, that senator, and that assemblyman. They can review six GIDs a year, and they'll be looking to determine if they're serving the purpose they were created for, if there's still a need for that GID, or if there's any other problems going forward. The idea behind it was that if there are problems or things that need to be changed, since the Board of County Commissioners can't get rid of a GID, it would allow legislators moving forward to possibly, potentially bring forward legislation to make any adjustments as needed. SB 57, this removes Washoe County, as well as a few others, from the Nevada Commission for Reconstruction of the VNT Railroad in Carson City. SB 375, this is the Flood Control Project Management Needs Committee that we appointed Mr. Scott Smith to earlier. It's, allows us to appoint that one member. The Flood Control Projects Needs Committee has to come back to us, as well as the Flood Management Authority by April 2, with either a recommendation, or a letter of why they were not able to come forth with a recommendation. And if the recommendation requires a ballot initiative, then we will be required to put it on the ballot for the November 6, 2018 election, or, yeah, election. AB 379, this allows for local governments to create parks, trails, and open-spaced districts, similar to GIDs, to help with parks. It can be initiated by the Board of County Commissioners or residents of the area. Very similar process to GIDs. They will be able to work on funding through private donations, the county can put funds forward. They can also enact special assessments, fees, ad valorem taxes, or any combination thereof. There'll have to be several public hearings and mailers that will go out if it reaches a point to let potentially impacted residents be aware of it. The original governing board would be appointed by the creating body, and after that, they would be elected. So, it can be created in just Washoe County, it can be created in, in association with the city of Reno, or the city of Sparks, or all three, and work forward from there. Prescription drugs, this is really, most of these are related to the opioid issues that are happening nationwide. So, the first one, SB 59, this allows for law enforcement or the coroner to have an ability to report any encounter for which they have that they believe is the result of an abuse of a controlled substance. That information will be uploaded to a statewide database that they will then be monitoring to see if they can find bad actors, either through the individuals themselves, or potentially through the doctors who are prescribing the opioids. I'm actually going to jump one real quick, so we'll do AB 428. This allows for opioid antagonists, which is used for an opioid overdose. They can be issued by a pharmacy with or without a prescription. So, you can go and say, "I believe that I need to have on hand this opioid antagonist," and the pharmacy is able to give that to you. Going back to SB 539, this was a large one, primarily associated with diabetes drugs and the cost of diabetes drugs. It'll require the state to create a list of the most prescribed drugs in the state, they'll have to create a tracking system- They'll have to create a tracking system for any drugs that fall under essential diabetes drugs, that will require tracking of any significant price increase. If it is, if an insurance company believes that there's going to be an increase, they have to notify the users and their insurers of any increase. And it requires reporting of any pharmaceutical benefits manager to explain any cost increase that happens in the interim of where that cost increase came from and why. Open to any other questions. I would first like to thank our legislative team, which includes Eric Spratley and Corey Silfarino from our Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Kristin Erickson and Jennifer Noble from our Washoe County District Attorney's Office, and Sean Sullivan from the Public Defenders, as well as the numerous staff back here who helped all of us down in Carson in getting the information that we needed to properly represent ourselves down there. It is no small feat to track those 600 and some odd bills, so it's not a one-person gig. In that, I would like to also thank Lisa Giannoli and Alfredo Alonso from Lewis &amp; Roca, who are also incredible assets to us as a county in representing us down in Carson City. And lastly, I'd like to help our, or thank our legislative delegation, which includes Senators Heidi Ganser, Don Gustafson, Ben Kiekefer, and Julia Ratty, as well as Majority Leader Teresa Benitez-Thompson, Assembly Members Skip Daly, Ira Hansen, Amber Joyner, Al Kramer, Lisa Krasner, Mike Sprinkle, and Jill Tollz, who are great to work with and were very helpful in helping us with different pieces of legislation all session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the diabetes drugs, how many other states have done this? I know they're looking at this at the federal level also. How many other states have done this now?
So I believe there's about 30 states who have done something. This is unique to Nevada, the way that we are tracking it and monitoring it, and who we are giving that responsibility to. So our system is unique, but the other 30 states that have something are all somewhat equally individual in the programs they have going forward to kind of look at this. The federal level is looking at the diabetes. They've also looked at things like the EpiPen, which is why the state, the bill allows for the most prescribed prescriptions in the state to also be tracked, thinking that that will then bring in items like EpiPens or other prescriptions that then the state may need to look into as well.
Is there anything in this legislation that allows us to file a formal complaint? And who would we file that formal complaint with if we see that the pharmaceutical companies are actually abusing this by raising the rates in Nevada? I mean, they do raise them on a state-by-state basis at times. I know, my husband used to sell pharmaceuticals, so.
So there's not a means for a governing body, such as the county, to file such a complaint? There will be a branch of the state that will be under Health and Human Services that will be tracking this information. Their regulations of how exactly they're going to do that are coming forward, so we'll be watching those to see if either that's a suggestion we can put forward, or something that they're anticipating giving us the ability to do.
Thank you. And I also want to take the opportunity, Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, to thank Jamie so much for all the hard work that she put into this. She's been phenomenal to work with, as I know you feel that way also, since both of us had spent some time down there. And she's always been responsive immediately to any questions, and so I thank her, and I thank the whole team, our county manager, and our ex-assistant county manager, Kevin Schiller, who was phenomenal throughout the whole session. So just thank you all for really being on top of all this and keeping us informed of what's going on.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, and I just wanted to echo what the vice chairwoman said. I think Ms. Rodriguez, you have really outperformed expectations when we brought you on the team, and it's no "we," when they brought you on the team. I just, you know, silently cheered when you were the selectee, and it really shows that your dad has a lot of influence in you, on you, and I bet he's very proud of your performance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez, I have to thank you for your time and energy that you expended down there. I completely agree with the vice chairwoman and also Commissioner Jung. You know, this is the second session I've been able to participate in as a commissioner. And I have to tell you, it was tremendous difference working with you, understanding the issues ahead of time, knowing where we had to be and what topics we were discussing. And it was a difficult session. I mean, it was not an easy session going into for many of us to deal with. On my scorecard, we came out ahead. You know, I think we came out, you know, not behind by any means, and I think we did very well. And it was all due to the organization and expertise that you and the team in Carson City had put together, along with the manager and staff, to conduct that. So a big congratulations to you on that session, and I really enjoy working with you, and thank you for all the time and effort you put in during the session. So thank you. And thank you for the legislative report, very informative. I think it covered quite a bit for us, and it had quite a bit of detail, but not too much. So it was perfect. So thank you very much. All right, looking for a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Chair, second by Commissioner Jung. I'll call for the vote. We have no public comment signed in. It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Manager, it is on to item 15. So we will open the public hearing, and we are now on to item 15.
Mr. Chair, item 15 is a public hearing item. This is second reading, possible action to adopt an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110, Development Code, Article 505, signs. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance, if adopted, will become ordinance number 1598, an ordinance amending Chapter 110 of the Washoe County Code Development Code within Article 505, Section 110.505.30, electronic message display signs, to allow certain electronic message display, EMD signs, to be located closer than the existing minimum 200-foot distance requirement, WCC 110.505.30, subsection D, between any residentially-zoned property and an EMD. The exception will allow an otherwise permitted EMD to be located within 100 feet of residentially-zoned property if the sign, one, is operated by a government entity, two, is located on property owned or controlled by a governmental entity, and, three, only conveys public health, safety, and welfare information, including traffic control and directional information. This was previously Bill 1783.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, being that this is a public hearing, I do have public comment signed in. Ms. Brandhorse, I would ask you to state the topic this afternoon in regards to the item.
Yes, my name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. Electronic message display. Oh, boy. This is poles and wires set up. The poles and wires are always set up so you could block phones, block phone calls. You can also use them for your laser beams. The laser beams can be very strong, connected to the poles and wires. Look at my area, look at my apartment. Those wires are still connected to my apartment because you don't want them to be removed. No, you don't. Why? Because you won't get your gas and electric, you won't get your phone service, you won't get your cable service, you won't get your refrigeration service. You don't have refrigerator. You don't have the refrigeration either. You won't be able to get TV either if you didn't have those poles and wires connected to my apartment. Could you? No, you could not. You couldn't even get water either, because look at the water that's stolen from my apartment. That water is my water, I pay for it, you don't. So you're stealing all the water out of my faucets. You steal the water out of my toilet.
We're talking about signs.
Those are the signs that you're talking about. You're covering it up that they are poles and wires.
Okay, continue.
The signs are there. That's the reason why you're doing this. Also, the warm water, the hot water you don't have serviced in your home because you can't afford it. You have to steal it out of my hot water heater. Oh, my God. All of this is going through the wires and poles because you have to live off of somebody else. You cannot afford to pay for it. No. You have to afford yourself to somebody else. That's the only way you could get it. Because I'm the one that pays my bills. I'm the one that takes care of my bills. I'm the one that pays it. That's why you can get your services for nothing. Your rent for nothing. You are squatters, and this is the real reason why you can say, designed to convey public health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse.
No.
All right, seeing no further public comment, I'll bring back to the board, looking for direction. Commissioner Jung.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance number 1598, and I want to remind the board and the public, this was brought about by Sun Valley, their general improvement district. Most specifically, they want to sign at the community center slash pool area.
Perfect.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Madam Vice Chair. All those, and I will call for the vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Manager, rear on number 16.
Mr. Chair, item 16 is a public hearing. This is for possible action on the appeal of the Washoe County Board of Adjustments Denial of Variance Case Number WVAR 17-0002, Fisher-Kins front yard setback reduction, which sought approval of variances to reduce the required front yard setback from 20 feet to 10 feet 2 inches for expansion of a dwelling that is currently permitted and under construction. The total encroachment, including the overhang, is proposed to be 9 feet 10 inches. The proposed encroachment into the front yard setback included a cover for the front porch with a depth of 7 feet 10 inches, and additional 2 feet of roof eave overhang within the front yard setback. The variance request also included a reduction in the front yard setback from 20 feet to 19 inches, 19 feet 6 inches, for a decorative truss at the front of the garage. The board may affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the Board of Adjustment. In doing so, the board may remand the matter back to the Board of Adjustment with instructions, or may direct, grant all, or may directly grant all or part of the variance requested. The property is located at 567 Alden Lane.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a handout from Mike Fisher, which I'll distribute to the board.
Great. I do, and once again, since this is a public hearing, we will take public comment first. I have Ms. Susan Kins. Ms. Kins.
I have a...
An overhead?
Yes.
Or a handout?
An overhead and...
All right, I will get the overhead up for you.
I'm not really sure how to work this.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. I believe Ms. Kins is the appellant.
Yes.
So are there other public comments? Okay, yeah, you were signing in for public comment, so we can...
She told me to.
Yeah, that's okay. No, she's not limited to the public comment. So, Ms. Kins, you can come back up. What we'll do is we'll have you give your presentation, and, yep, come on up. We'll get your presentation loaded up here for you.
Okay, great.
Being that you are the appellant, and being that you are the appellant today,
Okay.
We'll give you the opportunity to...
And I...
Yep.
I get more than three minutes?
Yes, you do.
Okay, I just want to see how this works.
Don't even worry about that.
Okay, yes. Okay, my name is Susannah Kins, and I'd like to thank the board, along with Mr. Powell, the Board of Adjustment, and the staff for their time and consideration of our variance request and of this appeal. My husband, Mike Fisher, and I are full-time residents of Incline Village. We both work and own businesses in Incline. We believe that the Board of Adjustment denied our variance for the sole reason that we applied for the variance after we obtained a permit and began construction on the home. We did not mean to disrespect or undermine the customary variance procedure. We simply ran out of time and couldn't afford to delay construction for another winter season. We hoped and expected that the board would give us the same consideration it would have given us had we upgot a variance in advance. We believe that had the board given our variance that consideration, it would have granted the variance because the variance is reasonable in scope, it's consistent with the neighborhood. Even with the variance, the home will be further from the street than most of the homes on downslope plots in the area. It is supported by all of our neighbors. There are no adverse impacts. It achieves the purpose and intent of the setback requirement. It's consistent with variances granted to similarly situated property owners. We believe the variance should be granted for these reasons. The subject property is on a 31% downsloping lot, but the slope between the street and the setback is actually 36%. The 20-foot, it's subject to the 20-foot setback instead of the 15-foot setback that many of the other properties in the area are subject to. The property line is 19 feet from the street, so effectively the setback is 39 feet from the street. It has a north-facing driveway, so it's exposed to the hazards of ice in the winter. And the property sits between Alden Lane and Dale Drive. We had some simple design goals. We wanted an area large enough for our six children and their growing families. We wanted a main floor master because we're getting older, and because it's become a selling feature of homes in the area. We wanted a three-car garage, access to that garage, a mudroom, and a covered front porch. We were able to accommodate all of those items in green, but we weren't able to accommodate the ones in red because of the restrictions imposed on us by the TRPA in combination with the effective 39-foot setback. I already discussed that. This drawing shows how the distance from the street effectively gives us, doubles our setback requirement. It also shows that we're only asking for a roof over a permitted porch, and all of the enclosed structures do fall behind the setback line. If the variance is granted, the roof eave will be over 29 feet from the edge of payment, which is farther than most of the homes on downslope lots. This table shows that the height restrictions imposed on the property. The bottom line shows the height limits for slopes of more than 22%. They vary depending on the roof pitch. With a 10, 12, or greater roof pitch, we could have a 42-foot height structure. This chart shows that the subject property was subject to more restrictive requirements because it's subject to the same limits as the property with only 22% slope. With that 42-foot height, we were able to position the garage at a level that we could have only a moderately sloping downward driveway slope. Obviously, a flat one is better in where we live, but we weren't able to achieve that. In order to get that 42-foot height, over 50% of the roof planes had to have that 10, 12 pitch, which limited the span of the walls, because the wider the span, the higher the roof pitch would be, the roof height would be. That created a lot of constraints in designing the home, and also led to a very complicated roof pattern. We were also limited on the depth of the home. In order to keep it on that 20-foot setback, we could only have a 40-foot depth, which severely limited what we could do. It was really difficult to come up with a plan that we could have access to the garage, a closet, and a powder room. And I actually enlisted the help of an architect, Dale Smith, to help me achieve that. But we weren't able to accommodate a mudroom. We had to put the laundry room over on where the kitchen is, and we weren't able to accommodate a covered porch. The property is on a retaining wall that was 58 feet wide and 10 feet tall. And by keeping that retaining wall, we didn't have to disrupt all that soil, which is an advantage to the environment. It helps manage. It also permitted a safer access to the home as opposed to a suspended bridge. We maxed out the height in order to get that lower-slope driveway, and so in order to accommodate a front porch would have required moving the whole structure... And so, in order to accommodate a front porch, would have required moving the whole structure back. That would have required lowering the tires, the entire structure, um, which would have required a longer, steeper driveway, and would have required removing the retaining wall and using a suspension bridge. This shows the current slope calculations, the current elevation, current garage elevation shows that we're able to achieve a 6% slope, but you have to adjust for the vertical curve. So it's actually more than that. To move the entry back would have resulted in a slope that exceeds the maximum slope permitted for, uh, home under the development code. It also would have defeated one of the purposes of the setback requirement, which is to, um, afford sufficient off-street parking because the steeper slope would not have been safe for parking. Anything over 8% is not considered safe. So, the special circumstances and hardship facing the property is it had a steep slope, 31%, which was really 36% with respect to where the driveway is. Um, it has a farther setback requirement of 20 as opposed to 15 feet. Because the property line is 19 feet from the street, it was actually a 39-foot setback. It has a north-facing driveway, so has more exposure to ice. It's subject to the same TRPA height limits as properties with a much less slope, a 22% slope. Moving the home back would have resulted in a long, steep driveway that exceeds the 14% slope limit, conflicts with the goals of the setback requirement because it would be unsafe to park, hazard in snow, hazardous in snow and ice conditions. Um, it would have required suspending the house further from the street, which exposes emergency responders to greater dan, danger, and it would be less accessible to the disabled, disabled and elderly persons. Um, it, uh, it's important to have a covered porch in this area due to snow and ice accumulating during, around the front door, which is dangerous to visitors, and also dangerous, uh, for emergency responders. It also can result in damage with water seeping into the home. There's no adverse impact. All the neighbors support it. The home will be 29 feet from the street, which is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. This home is next door to the property. It's only 13 feet from the street. This is on the street below. The lot is a street-to-street lot. This one is 20 feet. This one is 21 feet. This one is 6 feet. This is 23 feet. This is 21 feet. This is 27 feet. This one, which is very similar, is 29 feet. This one is 14 feet. Um, all of these are less or the same distance from the street that the home will be with a covered porch. You can see there are just literally hundreds of them in the area in Incline Village. Um, the Board of Adjustment has granted variances for similarly situated properties. I outlined them in the materials I provided. But the two properties in particular, 541 Dale and 547 Dale, are virtually identical to the subject property, and they were granted variances for the same special circumstances and hardship that faced our property. Uh, we don't believe the Board of Adjustment accorded our application due consideration, but rather dismissed it because we had already obtained a permit. Um, I don't believe this was the proper standard. There's nothing in the NRS or Development Code that precludes a property owner from obtaining a permit for a structure without a covered porch to come back and ask for a variance for a covered porch. Um, the variance is reasonable, and we believe it should be granted for all of the reasons I've just stated. And I don't want to go through them again. I just want to say that we support the county's enforcement of the setback requirement. However, granting the variance, um, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the setback requirements. The Board of Adjustment has granted many variances for similarly situated properties, and we believe we should be given the same consideration. We ask, um, we're only asking for a covered porch. Many of the variances are for enclosed structures, which are more of an obstruction in the setback. We believe that a variance is reasonable and request that you grant the variance. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Reese? Mr. Fisher, do you have anything to add at this time?
Almost. Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Mike Fisher. Just, I am going to speak on behalf of our neighbors who have all expressed their support, uh, for the variance at 567 Alden Lane. You've all received a, a copy of the petition that we sent out to our neighbors or delivered to our neighbors. And, uh, we had 18 neighbors sign that petition in support of our variance. Um, our adjacent neighbors, uh, the most, the, on either side of our house and the ones in front of us have, uh, written letters in support of the variance, and those were submitted with the variance application. And just, in general, just want to thank you for your time and consideration for our request of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Reese? Other? All right. All right. Do we need a report from staff? Madam Vice Chair?
Unless staff has something they want to add, I...
Are you ready to make a move already? All right, Mr. Powell?
I have a presentation prepared that mimics the one that I gave to the Board of Adjustment. I can present that if you like. If you have no specific questions, I can sit down and get out of the way.
All right. I'll leave it to the discretion of the, the Vice Chair.
I have no specific questions. I actually saw your report and went through it, and so I appreciate the information.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Madam Vice Chair, are you ready to make a motion?
I am. I move to reverse the denial of the decision of the Board of Adjustment and approve the variance case number WPVAR 17-0002, Fisher-Kins front yard setback. And the reason I, um, and the special circumstances are that this property is, um, it is, has a, a slope of about 30, approximately 31% in that area, which makes for a relatively steep slope to build a house on. Most of the houses in this community are built on that type of a steep slope. Moving this house back further would result in a much deeper driveway. This house faces north. Um, I, I have seen this house, so I've, I've actually went up and took a look at it. So, um, I, I saw the location. This driveway faces north. A much deeper driveway would be, I think, dangerous to this community because of the snow and everything that we have up there. So I would, um, think that there are some special circumstances. There's no detriment to the relief that's being requested. It's not going to create an additional runoff. In fact, because of the way the retaining wall is being maintained, it's going to limit the amount of runoff that runs into the lake. We're not really asking for special privileges here. This is something that's fairly common in this community. And we've, uh, we've made sure, our, our goal always is to protect the lake, as, as everybody knows. And so we've made sure that there are no special privileges for this. But, um, no one in the community is complaining or requesting that this not happen for any reason that would be damaging to the lake or to the community. And therefore, for that reason, I move approval. Second.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Madam Vice Chair, second by Commissioner Herman. I will call for the vote at this time. Seeing no further public comment. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. All right, we are on, Mr. Manager, to item 16. This is a second reading. So, Madam Clerk? Oh, Madam 17, I'm 17, 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be ordinance number 18, excuse me, 1599, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code at Chapter 25, Business License Ordinance, to create temporary marijuana establishment business licenses and set terms for such temporary licenses to include an automatic expiration date for those licenses, to establish restrictions on businesses which can apply for such temporary licenses, to include currently certified and licensed medical marijuana establishments, to set forth application requirements for such temporary licenses, to establish the denial process for license applications, to provide for waste disposal and registration card requirements for marijuana establishments, to set forth other terms and conditions for the temporary licenses, to provide approval and issuance standards for the temporary licenses, to provide for definitions related to the temporary marijuana establishes, establishments, and to make other changes necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. This was previously Bill Number 1784.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I have been informed that there is some discussion from staff in regards to some, a little, a small presentation. Is that correct, Mr. Solaro?
That is correct. For the record, Dave Solaro, Director of Community Services Department. Just one item. Uh, if the board does move ahead and adopt this ordinance, I want to verify that it is the intent of the board to allow staff to accept applications beginning tomorrow. There is a 10-day noticing period for changes to county code that needs to occur. That's why the August 4th, uh, is when this would be, would go into effect. We've got some noticing that needs to occur through, through the RGJ. Uh, but I just want to verify that it is the intent of the board that we start accepting applications from the applicants starting tomorrow.
Great. Is that the, is that a, a minimal?
I, I, yeah. I'll put that in the motion.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll add that clarification for you through the motion at the, at the end here. This is a public hearing, so we do have public comment signed in. So I have Mr. Will Adler. Mr. Adler, would you like to speak?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Will Adler, representing Sierra Cannabis Coalition. I would just like to thank your staff and everybody else for doing a great job drafting, uh, these ordinances. They're well structured and well thought out, and, uh, you took your time and did it right. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Um, I also have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse signed in.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. Uh, the problem is that people do get high on marijuana. They are abusing the product, marijuana. They grow the plants inside their homes or outside their yards. Uh, they also, uh, don't really need marijuana because you're trying to say it's for medical problems, medical issues, medical, um, what is it? Maybe you slice somebody's body open and they're in pain, so you're going to shove the marijuana down their throat? Uh, you know, I don't approve of marijuana at all. You say registration card requirements for marijuana establishments. Well, is that the real reason to really get high on marijuana? So you can go out and kill and murder people? Yes, it is the truth. Uh, you also turn into the vampire so you can suck out their blood too? That's the real reason for marijuana? It says, uh, to provide approval and issuance standards for the temporary licenses? What is that supposed to mean? We tried to stop this marijuana, uh, because it's located on South Virginia Street. And lots of complaints, uh, that they even walked in front of a bus and was killed because the buses do travel quite fast to stay on time. And I just wanted to let you know, it's nothing but murders, bank robberies. That's the real reason for getting high on marijuana. Oh, you can also say that the highness in your body is going to make you even more beautiful than ever because you had the body in front of you, the dead body? And you are already caught being high on marijuana? And the dead body is in front of you?
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. All right. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board at this time. Commissioner John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to, um, adopt the ordinance number 1599 with the caveat that applications will be accepted tomorrow.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those, I will call for the vote. Do we, no, I don't think that was the bill number. Was that not the 1599?
That was the ordinance.
Oh, it was the bill number? Oh, okay, ordinance number? Um, ordinance number was 1599. Mr. Leprelly, you're...
I don't have a question on the bill number, but on, um, the condition that was added, um, and maybe staff input would help here, but the board cannot make substantial changes to the terms of ordinances from the time they're introduced, um, to the, to the time of the second reading, otherwise you have to start over again. So this, this, um, date, uh, condition needs to have been contemplated by the, by the bill and the form it was introduced. Otherwise, it's not allowable.
For the record, Dave Solaro, Director of Community Services Department. I think, I think this maybe is more of a procedural issue for staff to be able to accept the applications. Uh, as I understand, there's, you know, it's fairly silent, uh, in this process in trying to get the applications in the door and allow staff to start working on those applications, even though the, the bill or the ordinance has not been, um, has not had, gone through the waiting period of, of the 10-day, uh, noticing to the public. So, uh, maybe I'm, maybe I'm, uh, trying to do something here that, that is not necessary, um, at the end of the day, and we can just accept those applications regardless. The effective date of this ordinance is...
The motion maker strikes that and just says that I, um, adopt ordinance 1599. Does a second or agree?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to accept, to adopt the ordinance, um, from Commissioner John, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. Leprelly, you're okay? We're good? Okay, we're all good. All right. That concludes our public hearing. So we will close, close the public hearing. Bring it back to the, we'll take it on to, uh, item 18, our final public comment. Mr. Manager?
Ms. Chair, this is public comment item 19. 18, uh, comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person. May pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. I have one signed in, uh, for, uh, at this time, Ms. Elizabeth Gamble. Ms. Gamble? Oh. Good afternoon, Ms. Gamble.
Good morning, well, afternoon, now you're right.
We just snuck over to afternoon.
Yeah, it snuck over. Elizabeth Gamble, Gerlock, Nevada. I want to thank you for approving the, um, housing for our soon-to-be-in-residence deputy sheriff, and also the MOU with Pershing County for our fire department. With reference to the fire department, I am here today to talk about the dismissal of our previous fire service coordinator, Pat Irwin. He served with distinction for over a year, setting up an awful lot of these items that have gone through in the last week or two, getting the paperwork done through him. And last week, County Commissioner, um, Herriman from District 5 requested an audit for the Gerlock Fire Department so we could find out what was going on out there. That required our fire chief or fire service personnel to be fired. I did not see it on the agenda this time, and I was a little bit disappointed by that because I am still curious why a man who got the volunteer fire department back on board graduated the first fire department class for volunteers, that has been held in Gerlock in over 15, 20 years, had 107 calls that averaged under four minutes response time, set up community projects to help the elderly with their, uh, dead trees and fire hazards in their yard, that, um, got to know the people he was working for and drove 200-some-odd miles, if not 300, to come and work in our community, live in our community, and get to know us. And why he was dismissed with only an hour's notice after receiving two evaluations that said meet or exceed expectations, and had no warning that he had done anything that would require having his term dismissed. I understand it was a personal issue. I understand you can't discuss maybe why he was filed personally, fired personally, or dismissed, whichever word you would choose to use. But even... But even he does not know this. The day before his probationary period was up, he was told depart these premises within one hour. One hour. We are 100 miles from civilization. The man arrives at work in a car, and they expected him to pack his couches, his clothes, his firefighting equipment, his life that he'd been living for a year into his compact car and leave in an hour. It was, it was so spectacularly mismanaged, and I'm having difficulty with it. So if there is, and the words were, this is not the face we want for Gerlock. If it was not the face you wanted for Gerlock, please come to Gerlock and tell us what face you want because we know what we wanted. We wanted Pat Irwin, and we would like to have him back. And if the new fire service coordinator does not stand up to his standards, I will really wonder what you do want for Gerlock in the long term. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. All right. Seeing no further public comment, sign in at this time. We'll close public comment, and we will move on to item 19. Commissioner, County Manager's comments. Mr. Manager? All right. All right. Do you have, Commissioner Herman?
In response to Ms. Gamble's request, I would like to reiterate that we do process an audit and find out, get to the bottom of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comments from any of the other commissioners at this time, we'll close manager, Commissioner Manager's announcement, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.